Could everyone please find their seats? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of October 19th, 2021 is now called to order. The time is 6:00 PM. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class system. This evening's agenda includes moment of silence, presentation of colors and pledge of allegiance, public comments, consent action items, which include four items under board office, four items under academic services, three items under business services, five items under human resources, which for are good cause. Dr. Savage, please provide an explanation for these four items.
Yes, Madam Chair. Item J2, the approval to adopt the job descriptions for legal services. This item was added as good cause because the board approved the plan for the legal department in August, and the school board attorney wishes to advertise and fill the positions as soon as possible. J3 and J4, the approval of the fiscal year 21-22 COVID-19 memorandum of understanding with the Teachers Association of Lee County, as well as the memorandum of understanding with the Support Personnel Association of Lee County. Those items were both added as good cause because the unions voted in favor of ratification. Both of these items are for fiscal year 22, and the district would like to continue the implementation of the provisions which began on July 1st. The MOUs include a payment in December of a $1,000 payment to those employees that did not previously receive a qualified disaster relief payment from the state of Florida. And last but not least, item J5 is the approval of the fiscal year 22 route time mileage memorandum of understanding with the Support Personnel Association of Lee County, that's the SPALC. And that item was added as good cause because the union voted in favor of ratification, and implementation began again in July of 2021 for the fiscal year 22.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. As President Officer, I find there is good cause to add these four items to the agenda. One item under information systems, nine items under operations, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Have you moved to adopt the agenda? Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. May I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, seconded by Ms. Morgan. Please record your votes. Ms. Roman.
Mm-hmm.
I cannot see it, so if you could tell me.
Mine didn't, it didn't come up.
Yes, aye.
Thank you, ladies. Ms. Vaughn will lead us in a moment of silence, after which Mrs. Morgan will lead us in the presentation of the colors and the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Vaughn?
Please stand for a moment of silence.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Morgan?
Introducing the cadet, introducing the cadet who is presenting the national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight is First Sergeant Retired Derek Hevner, Army Instructor from Cypress Lake High School. First Sergeant Hevner retired after serving 21 years in the Army. He is a veteran of Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom. This is his first year as a JROTC instructor in the district. Welcome, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. The national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight are presented by Cadet Staff Sergeant Casey Tibercio of the Panther Battalion Junior ROTC Program. Casey is a senior with a weighted academic grade point average of 4.07. She is actively involved in the Junior ROTC Program Color Guard, Honor Guard, and Raider Team. She's also an accomplished member of the Cypress Lake Marching Band, Jazz Band, and Symphony. Additionally, Casey is a local artist and small business owner. After graduation, she plans to pursue a business degree with an emphasis on art at the Florida Gulf Coast University. Please stand and join me in reciting our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Prey Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket provided at the back of the room. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff located in the hallway outside of the boardroom. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back and will be made from the microphone in the back. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on school district issues. Personal attacks on individuals or abusive language are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or display of temper are prohibited. Speakers may not address board members by name, and personal attacks against individual board members, the board as a whole, the superintendent, or district staff are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. There will be a one warning, and we ask that you govern yourself accordingly. We will take recesses as necessary if there is not decorum in the chambers. Please remember that it is unlawful and a second-degree misdemeanor to knowingly disrupt or interfere with a school board meeting. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20, two minutes if there are 30, one minute if there are 31 speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, 60 speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. We encourage you to address the board as a whole versus individual board members as they are a collective board. Please state your name when you approach the microphone, and I will call you five speakers at a time. Please follow the staff's direction when lining up. Madam Chair, we have 17 speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Prey Bruno. Please make sure you have completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to allow staff for follow-up. The cards are located with the staff in the hallway. In addition, if there is not decorum during this meeting, I will call for a five-minute recess. We will continue to recess this meeting as needed, increasing five minutes at a time. Members of the dais, when a recess is called, I ask that you leave the chamber. Of course, it goes without saying that during the recess, board members will not discuss any matter that is pending on the agenda or will come before this body to avoid any sunshine violations. I will reiterate what Ms. Prey Bruno just said, in that it is unlawful and a second-degree misdemeanor to knowingly disrupt or interfere with school board meeting. We would appreciate it if you would state your name prior to making your comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but did not fill out a comment card? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, Mr. Prey Bruno, please proceed with public comments, and could you please also give the time allotted? I don't think that...
The time allotted is going to be three minutes. We have 17 speakers.
Correct. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Robert Roper, Crystal Johnson, Denise Nystrom, Keith, Guy Saunders. And please be reminded that this is what we call a limited public forum for First Amendment and constitutional purposes.
Can you start my time again, please? Robert Roper, also known as Ward Cleaver. We hear a lot about the desire of this board and the superintendent to be transparent. Being transparent comes with the connotation that you have nothing to hide. During public comment at the action meeting of September 21st, I asked the following questions. What are the current policies regarding boys' and girls' restrooms? Where are these policies located? How can I obtain a copy of these policies? All of you were present for the questions, and none of you responded. If you were standing on this side of the microphone, what conclusion would you draw? I've concluded that you really don't care about what we say from this microphone. So I sent an email on October 11th to District 5 Board Member because, well, I voted for her. I copied the board attorney and the superintendent. I simply and respectively respectfully requested a copy of that policy. I have not even been given the courtesy of a reply. You are elected to represent the voters. Many of the voters are parents, some are not. Equality. Florida did not elect you. Surprisingly enough, the students of Lee County did not elect you. You did not elect yourself, therefore your personal interest has no place in policy. Voters and votes are what, the voters are expecting you to represent them in their policies and decisions. This is my theory. You will not give me that policy because you're afraid that I will share it with the parents and the voters of Lee County. Well, you would be correct about that. This is something the parents and the voters should have access to because it's a matter of public safety. You know, the public safety, that it's so important that voters and parents are locked outside the building until just before the meeting, and are subject to a metal detector search in order to be allowed inside the meeting room? Maybe you should make your restrooms that secure. Are any of you concerned that a 14-year-old girl was raped, sodomized by a boy wearing a skirt in the girl's restroom in another school district? A school district that utilizes the same policy that the Lee County School District has? It's a matter of public safety. It is the fact that your policy is the same as that policy that caused the sexual assault of this young lady. Is that why your policy is hidden? Be the transparent board and superintendent you claim to be. Let's make this policy public, then let's fix it for the safety and well-being of the students of Lee County.
Can I move this up? I can't see the time. It's usually further up. Is that okay?
Ms. Morgan? Could you assist them?
Yeah, just, I can't see the time. Thank you, thank you.
And it's right up here as well.
Thank you very much, okay. At the last action meeting, the ugly truth was revealed by ethical, brave board members, six, five, and two, about the abuse of power by District 3. The ugly truth, racially charged statements about Guatemalan children verbally abuses the Haitian school board attorney who had to put a letter in her file as a safeguard measure, tells the black board member to stay in her own lane. District 6 member is just fighting for construction and renovations for the children in East Lee and Lay High, has filed false ethics complaints against District 3, I'm sorry, against District 2 and 6, has publicly harassed the superintendent on numerous occasions. Pay for play includes being instrumental in building a brand-new high school in the white area of Estero, and now breaking ground in District 3 on a middle school. There was an 80-acre tract of land in Estero that the middle school was supposed to be built on, but instead, land was purchased next to the existing high school. Millions were spent on surveyors, engineers, plans, when suddenly, they went back to the 80 acres of land, and 40 of those acres will now be a park for the town of Estero. This is on video. District 3 stated her intention in passing the half-cent sales tax was to use the money for construction on the buildings and to give the teachers a raise. In a later video, she denied ever saying that, and the buildings have been built using bond money. Several board members admit that Estero's abuse of power is the worst. 51-years-old, 15-year adjunct professor, law degree, if you don't understand cultural diversity by now, you never will. Bottom line, when board members, the community, EDAT, and the F S B A all want you to resign, you're a liability to the school district, and you should have the moral compass to resign. Oh, and thank you for hiring a new investigator that won't need to be investigated. Board members, you need to do the right thing tonight. Thank you.
My name is Guy Saunders. You may have read recently, John Gruden of the Las Vegas NFL Football Team lost a million-dollar job for a tasteless email sent 10 years ago. The email was a private message. The District 3 representative made a very derogatory and racial remark in a public forum and is still in office. Why? You need to take action so that District 3 representative can join John Gruden on the sideline. Thank you.
Many of us have grave concerns about many issues that we are dealing with and that the school board is dealing with. They include inclusion of critical race theory in classes, in board policies, and in curriculum. Another issue is radical restructuring of what it means to be male, what it means to be female, what it means to be man, what it means to be woman. There is an almost complete disregard for the God-given anatomy and biology through God-given sex assignment. There's also a secretive inclusion of pornography in the classrooms, in the media centers. There's also ongoing pressure for mask mandates, and more particularly, prejudice against unmasked students. In the midst of all of these concerns, it's tragic that we have to be focused so much on the inherent unhealthiness within the school board itself. Ms. Chris Patrica of Division 3...
Excuse me, sir. We don't have any personal attacks, and honestly, to make sure that we're not violating any viewpoints, we don't have any personal compliments either.
This person from District 3 has led an underground effort with three other school board members complicit to undermine current school board supervisor, Dr. Ken Savage, and to get him voted out. She has also led a subversive campaign against sister school board members, Giovanni, Giddens, and Vaughn. The same person...
Sir, Jess, sir, this is the last reminder, we do not...
Did I, oh, I'm sorry. Got it? Three other school, okay. She has also fought for mandating that children wear masks when she often does not. And unfortunately, as has already been mentioned, she has displayed her racist bias against Guatemalan children. This person representing District 3 should be immediately removed if she doesn't resign immediately from the Lee County School Board. She should also immediately resign or be removed as president of the Florida School Board's Association. Sometimes, healing comes from excising really unhealthy parts of the body. That's true physically, physiologically. It's also true in terms of relational systems of which the school board is part. I have a PhD in marriage and family therapy, had a 45-year practice in California, and led a master's degree program in marriage and family therapy. Relational issues are something that I know a little bit about.
My name is Crystal Johnson. I am here tonight as a concerned parent, and about black and brown children being misrepresented by our Lee County School Board as a whole, as you stated. When you speak about our children of all different races, backgrounds, you should be most considerate of all of them. It is, I think, I find it very insulting and offensive for such remarks to be made concerning any of the children. As a black woman, I'm not unfamiliar with this type of treatment. However, it is unacceptable. And I think you should do what's right, but I'm not sure you will. I'm positive you won't, because you think you're right. You know, you own your feelings, you own your thoughts, but they have no place on our district board. You don't get to do that. It is a professional standard, you know, outside of professional standards. You should be more professional. I've always had a great deal of respect because I like the truth. I like people who tell their truth, but not when you think it's okay to disrespect others. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Tara Jenner, Dawn Armstrong, Jan M., Jen Watts, Edward Dross.
Board policies that fly in the face of our rights as protected by the U.S. and state constitutions are illegal and unenforceable. Of note, we have the right to petition our government for a redress of grievances. This cannot be effectively done without stating the grievance and the party who has aggrieved us. As long as the comments made are applicable to the district and within the allotted time, and do not violate certain rules, including slander, libel, things of that particular nature for which individuals are personally responsible and accountable, and for which there is a process through which you can go to get recourse, there should be no limitation on our rights when we meet the time allotted at this microphone. As note regarding the legal team, I understand litigation usually costs three times that much of settlements. My concern is that when you habitually settle claims, it may drive up frivolous claims, resulting in even greater expense in the long run than if you were to actually defend the state and our, I should say, our district against those frivolous cases, and only settle the ones for which you know we are actually accountable. Looking at the Talc and Spalc MOUs, I have to ask what the definition is when using the term "public health emergency"? Who determines this, and what's the threshold and criteria for something no longer being classified as such? The emergency expenditure for food that you guys have on the schedule tonight for review would not have been necessary but for the wrongful termination of the contract the district had with Oaks Farms. So now, not only are we facing higher costs and availability issues, but we're also dealing with a claim against the district that might run us millions. The district motto, "Personal, Passionate, and Progressive," does not match what the district actually stands for. This is evidenced by recent comments by District 3 Board Member Chris Patrica, who lumped a group of children together.
Excuse me, Ms. Jenner, you know the rules.
As I said before, I have the right, as long as I'm not interfering with the board...
This is your first warning, Ms. Jenner.
Maybe it would be more apropos, maybe it would be more apropos to call us perverse, progressive, promiscuous, and propaganda-driven. I recommend changing the motto to what we should strive to be: professional, passionate, and if you want to stick with the P's, maybe principled, unparalleled, preparative, or I'm a little disgusted with the way this board has been going, and as you know, I've been coming for many, many years, maybe... maybe longer than most of the people on this board. I will not be going away. I will be holding you accountable. And I will continue to remind the individuals on the board and the board attorney when they are wrong because that is my right and my authority to do so. Thank you.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name's Dawn Armstrong. Proud parent to juniors that go to North Fort Myers High School. So let's talk about one thing: rules and conflict resolution. I want you to remember that because I will be getting back to that in a minute. At last week's workshop, this board was talking about the superintendent search and the survey you put out there. And some board members started questioning, how come we didn't get a lot of surveys back? Or the amount of people... Well, towards the end of the meeting, an organization actually requested to come to these board meetings and have a, to speak for five minutes, which is perfectly in board policy. And I thought, just for once, one of you up there would have had a V8 moment and said, wow, maybe it's because we don't believe, the public's just not, don't believe in us anymore. Because that's the truth. They don't trust you. They don't believe in you. They know you're not going to listen to them. The bus drivers don't have no confidence in you. The teachers don't. And most importantly, our students don't. One of the things I want to remind you is, before this pandemic, we used to have our students come up here and have performances. Do anyone know why we did that or why we do it? Because my tenure on the board is one of the things I brought to the board. I wanted to remind us at every board meeting why we are up there. But accordingly, obviously, you guys don't. But here's more facts that I just figured I'd throw out there for you guys. In the past four board meetings, two action, two briefing, you have spent 12 hours, 36 minutes, and 46 seconds. Two hours and 55 minutes was public comment, 42 minutes and 38 seconds of educational issues that the board discussed. Forty-eight, four hours of staff time. And the rest of that? Five hours of this board arguing and fighting back and forth. That's ridiculous. Our students deserve better than that. Our kids do. I'm not going to allow you guys to ruin our kids' education. And when I read to you earlier, when I started this, rules and conflict resolution? Is it because you guys are getting ready to hire a firm to come in here and teach you guys how to get along? But guess what? That is our kindergarten curriculum for first quarter. If they can learn it like kindergarten, why can't you? You should be ashamed of yourselves the way you fight.
Dr. Edgar F. Grass, forty-three-year practicing physician, Lee County, Florida. I read today in the National School Boards Association a letter that I'm now considered a domestic terrorist, as are all of these parents in the room. I want to point out that that is not true. We are here exercising our civic duty and First Amendment rights. Now, I have several questions, as did Pastor Roper, that have not been answered over the last six months of my attendance at these meetings. Has the Florida Equity Poster been removed from school property? I have it on good authority it has not. What are the board's plans regarding bathroom facilities for transgenders? Where and when will critical race theory and 1619 projects be taught? I can't find any reference in any of the meetings to these subjects. If you have those references, please email them to me. Why are large numbers of immodly children attending Lee County schools? Is the county government collecting tax revenues to cover their expenses? Are Lee County citizens footing the bill for their education? Previously, I asked Dr. Savage regarding unnamed groups donating banned books to the school libraries. This question has not been answered. Banned books containing pornography and hate are in school libraries. Public records request from the FLCA produced a list of forty-four books that LCSD states are currently in district schools. Interestingly, these books are also on the Study Think Guide list to be accepted in the district this year. For instance, books called Thirteen Ways Which Advocate Teen Suicide, The Bluest Eye, representing pornography, Killing Mr. Griffin: A Story About Killing An English Teacher By His Students, Kite Runner, which includes sodomy, forced sex on minors, torture, I Am Jazz: The Story Of The Transgender Transition Of A Young Girl. Would you be proud to have your children and grandchildren read these? On pure radical propaganda and agenda stance, these books are meant as purposeful grooming of innocent children. To ignore these books as a school board, their existence means that you approve of shameful and corrupt material. I ask you to please remove them immediately from the district libraries. Thank you.
All the following individuals, please line up. Mario Juarez, Marcia Euse, Melissa Hatter, Kristy Divigeli, Bill Hupman.
Hi, my name is Jennifer, and I do have two children in Lee County schools. I'm here because I'm a concerned citizen along with Lee County activists. I do want to apologize for my last week. I have been deemed deaf by a medical doctor. So I do intend to speak loud for the attorney who continued to interrupt me. I apologize. But I do speak loud because I am deemed deaf medically. Okay? And I would like to apologize to the one without the mask and the one next to her because those are the only two that deserve my apology along with my respect. So I do apologize to the both of you. Thank you. Okay? So I just want to reiterate because I'm a concerned parent. I think I told you I moved here 15 years ago for an A-rated school, and we are now a C-rated school. Okay? I don't understand what has happened. Okay? And when it comes to the passion of our children, okay, I'm confused. Okay? To learn that when our kids graduate Lee County, and like I said last time, 52% do not have reading proficiency. Okay? And 61% does not have math proficiency. I think it's time to start teaching our kids reading, math. And you've already taken away their signature by not teaching them creative writing, cursive writing, excuse me. Okay? So now they don't even have an identity thanks to you people. Okay? But my concern is I just want to get back to an A-rated school because my question is to you. How do you expect to get reelected with those type of figures? I would like to know that because I don't see that being happen. Okay? Second of all, I got a disturbing email. Over hundreds and hundreds of books in our Lee County system has some type of pornography. Yes, I did say pornography. Okay? And I'm going to be, next board meeting, I will have the exact figure. I just didn't have time to calculate it all. But when I saw that email and I opened that email, my heart sunk. Lastly, I had a conversation with the principal of the school thirty days ago. And what I got from this conversation from the principal was a cry, a desperate cry for help. Okay? And I'm not no psychiatrist, but let me tell you. I am a retired banker, VP of Banking, for fifty, for 25 years, and I retired when I'm 50 years old. I think I know what I'm talking about. When this principal was crying in my ear, when I hung up the phone with them, my heart sunk for them. And I actually told them that we are working to get rid of the board because this is a person has dedicated his life to teaching. And I'm sure you people know that. You are losing good teachers.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jan. I live in Lee County. I have one child who's an adult but went through the entire Lee County school system from kindergarten through 12th grade at Fort Myers High. I just want to take a minute and I want to do a few thank yous because we've got some teachers who deserve a lot of gratitude for having gone through a pandemic and taking care of our children and serving them and teaching them and caring for them. And sometimes that just needs to be said. I know it needs to be said because that's what we taught our children. I want to take some time and thank the board for some difficult years. I think, I know things aren't always easy, but I think you deserve some thanks. I want to take some time and thank our bus drivers and speak in support of them for they also serve our kids. And there are people in the community who do support them. And I hope that you guys keep that in mind. Serving is a form of leadership. And all of these people lead, and they take care of our children. I think we're coming into a place, possibly, there's, where we might be, fingers crossed, I'm not a public health expert, but there's some evidence that we might be coming out of the pandemic. I don't, again, I'm not a public health expert. But there are a couple of predictive models from University of Florida and University of South Florida who have said that we may peak in September and then improve in October. And one model even dared to speculate on the phrase herd immunity. So a big part of that is the vaccinations and all other public health measures. Public health is a field of science. Public health is a field of study. It's a field of accreditation. If you see someone with an M of PH after their name, it's a master's of public health. So all these measures that have been implemented during a pandemic were part of this public health knowledge and research and implementation. So I'm thankful for all of them. I want to thank you once again, this will be my second time, for the strong anti-bullying policy that we have in Lee County schools. And it actually came from Jeffrey Johnston, who was a Cape Coral honors student. I know there's 67 counties in Florida. Lee County is the impetus, unfortunately, and fortunately, and his mother, for creating this strong anti-bullying policy where harassment and intimidation are not allowed. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mario Juarez. I am the CEO, President of the Guatemala USFL Chamber of Commerce. As a chamber, we also work along with the Guatemala community and Latino community in general. I'm here today, as you all know, my District Three made those remarks about our Guatemalan students. I didn't write a letter or email previously because I was in Guatemala on the business trip. But I did follow up through the social media what was going on here. And this is very unacceptable. I'm here today to represent not only the Guatemala students but all the Latino and gender students of Lee County. Why? Because we deserve a better representation through our school board district. It's time for us to step up and speak up. Here, as you all know about District Three, those remarks made our students feel like ignorance. This is not acceptable. Not in the school district, not to our kids. We point to you where you are sitting now with our votes. And you know, District Three, you promised to work with the Latino community, and we have proof of that when you were campaigning for the seat. Yesterday, I sent an email through this school board superintendent and all the local authorities, and I didn't have, and I didn't receive, I could see an email back. What a shame. What type of communication we have here? Communication is number one. Number one priority between the parents, you, the board member who represents us, and the whole community, and our community leaders. There are about 2,000 Guatemala students in the Lee County district alone. And my question for you is, do you know that in Guatemala, we speak 26 dialects or languages, if you want to call that? And I would like to ask, how many translators do you have here in Lee County that will speak these dialects or languages? Because we are a lot, 2,000 and change, is a lot of students. And we really need that help. If District Three wasn't aware about our culture, I think there should be a communication issue with all these principles. I think that you mentioned about having these issues or problems with our students. So what is the communication? I guess we don't have that here.
Thank you, Mr. Juarez.
Hi, I'm Melissa Hatter. I'll keep repeating this until you uphold our constitutional rights. Board Policy 1.11 is unconstitutional. You are placing restrictions on our right to express ourselves regarding school district business. Obviously, these concerns will include matters regarding specific individuals. Must you be ordered by a judge to uphold our constitutional rights, as has happened in many other districts which I shared with you? Attorney Bruno, in response to my slander complaint, you personally informed me that it was the staff members' constitutional rights to voice their opinion. How is your denying the public the right you protect for staff a demonstration of maintaining public trust as you informed the board they were obligated to do during your exercise with them today? Two lighthouse complaints filed in May have still not been addressed. And the board has still not personally responded to my appeal of the investigation. When will you provide accountability and transparency? Public trust means doing the right thing. We have legally protected rights, the First Amendment. And as long as you keep violating that, you have nobody's trust. And you'll never gain it until you earn it back. Is that not what we've all taught our kids? When you break, you lie to somebody, you have to earn their trust back? But yet, you have no desire to do what we teach, the fundamentals we teach children as adults. And it's sad.
Christine Divigeli, empowered parent. This wall is very obstructing and it's just, it's very awkward for people up here speaking, number one. I, one of the board members made a comment a week or so ago, maybe a couple weeks ago, about the banned book list and about us, you know, in our schools having books like To Kill A Mockingbird and Catcher In The Rye. And that's why parents are so upset right now. So I just want to give you an example really quick of some of the books that we're referring, that parents are referring to when they say that, you know, there are books that are inappropriate for children in schools. And this was provided by Florida Citizens Alliance. The first one is a book called George. And George, George is, hm, hm. George has been able to find information about being transgender online after her brother taught her how to clear the web browser's history on mom's computer. That's just a little excerpt. The next one is from a book called... What is this one called? It has a long name. The Absolutely True Diary Of A Part-Time Indian. And this is in several of our middle schools and a few of our high schools. And the reviews on this alone should scare you.[1782.85] It says banned and challenged for profanity, sexual references, and allegations of sexual misconduct by the author. Many objected to the language and references to masturbation. The concern was content regarding alcohol, bullying, violent sexual references, profanity, and slurs. Not found suitable for a public school because of gratuitous and unnecessary profanity and reference to sexual acts. I could go on, but I'm going to go to the next book. The next one is a book called Drama. And it seems innocent enough. It just, it looks like, I even purchased this book, you know, under, when my children were in elementary school because she saw it in the library. And this book, I had no idea that this little book was about, Drama is the Story of Callie, a girl in middle school who loves stage crew and theater and who has a twin best friends, twin best friends who are gay. The characters in that story are based on real people, real friends of mine. In high school, I had two best friends who were gay twin brothers and our relationship pretty much mirrors what you see in the pages. So, when we say that we have problems and issues, when us as parents say that we have issues with the curriculum, with the books that are in the library, these are the reasons. When we ask you, these are, these are books that, these are decisions and conversations and things that parents should be having with their children. You do not have the right to have these conversations with our children and expose our children to these types of things. It's wrong and we will hold you all accountable because even if you didn't do it, it's neglect if nothing else. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bill Hoffman. Wow, I don't even feel like I have my First Amendment rights. I had to mark out a lot of my stuff.
Sir, could you speak into the microphone, please?
Yeah, I had to mark out a lot of my stuff. I don't feel like I have my First Amendment rights after all the rules. I don't want to break the rules, so let me see what I can do. My first trip to Bonita in Lee County was 1985. My oldest daughter graduated from Astero High School in the late 90s. I'm a grandfather. I just Googled the first school books in America. Early public schools in the United States did not focus on academics like math reading. Instead, they taught virtues of family, religion, and community. Now the books are teaching the evil's good and good's evil. History's being changed wrongly. It's not true. God knows your hearts. I, I'm astounded at some of the stuff I've heard tonight. It's actually worse than I thought. Some of you people think you're above the parents and maybe look like you are, but you're not above God. There's a book, the greatest book ever written, sold more than any book in the world, and I challenge you to read, each one of you, whatever revision, Matthew 18:6 tonight, what happens if you mislead children? If you read that, I don't know how you're going to sleep tonight. I mean, I couldn't with what I hear tonight. Gosh, I don't even know what to say. Wow. Some of the policies and the books and the agenda you have toward the children, in your heart, you know what's right. Just think about your parents or grandparents, your great-grandparents. Would they do this or allow this in the schools? Some of y'all need to resign. I think it'd be in your best interest to get in a different profession that you're better suited for. I just ask you, who do you, who do you represent and what about the US Constitution? I mean, it's still America. I don't know. I hope for a few more years.
The following individuals, please line up. Susan, Jackie Perez, Jasmine Miller.
Hi, my name is Marsha Ellis.
Just one second, ma'am, please. Please make sure you go on the other side of the stanchion. Thank you.
Hi, Ben. Hi, Ben.
No, it's fine. My name is Marsha Ellis and I'm here, first of all, to say that I'm waiting for that verdict in Hayes versus DeSantis. And even though our COVID numbers are looking better for the immunocompromised students and staff, the wolf only has to find you once. And if you haven't been exposed to COVID, you don't know your antibody level, you don't know what kind of a reaction that you're going to have. But today, I want to talk about education as an institution and how it is central to the health of a community. When I look at you all, I think about my grandfather who served on his local school board for 30 years. I was brought up to value education, to respect teachers, bus drivers, school staff, and the people who worked at the school, they were my neighbors, my family, my friends, and they were loved and appreciated. Today, I'm speaking in support for school staff. As a community member, I urge the board to lead our community in finding ways that we can show support and appreciation for our school staff, the teachers, the bus drivers, the support staff, the cafeteria workers. Please lessen the pressure that this community is under by creating an initiative or a platform, an outlet for our community so that we can express the positives, so we can show our gratitude and our support so that businesses, individuals, and families, churches can show how much we appreciate the efforts of our teachers and our school staff. We've been through so much as a community and having some way that we can transform this tragedy by recognizing the sacrifices of our school staff, it's going to lift the spirits of our community and it's going to improve morale. We need to reclaim the respect that education has been the foundation of the American way. I ask you to please lead us in these efforts and give us all, the many, many people that are here now in Lee County, the opportunity to be able to recognize the seriousness and the severity of what we have survived and show some appreciation and respect. Please provide us a way to show our gratitude. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Jasmine Miller, J.J. Now, I'm a homeless woman in the community. Greetings from the camp. I support the school board. Do not resign. Stand firm. Children are a trust from God Almighty entrusted to the school board and to the parents. The ultimate teachers of our children are the parents. Yes, do not come here and meet up on a school board member. Now, I must tell you exactly who I am. I used to be a teacher for 10 long years in Miami Dade. I taught children that were severely emotionally disturbed. And then I left and I became a defense immigration attorney down there in Miami. Yes, I battled the Department of Justice, taking primarily Guatemalan clients to the court. And that's why I came to support the district member in District 3. Yes, it is a fact. In Guatemala, the children have no running water. And that's a fact. So, she was not saying anything derogatory. So, I came here to straighten the facts. Now, Mr. Mario Juarez, I'd like to speak to you.
Excuse me, ma'am. We want to make sure that you address the board, not individuals in the audience, please.
On behalf of the community, I'd like to speak to you one day and explain to you, if you really, really blow this out, the judges are listening, and when you go to pursue a 42B cancellation of removal, they'll remember that you made a big, big thing, issue, saying that there's running water in Guatemala and there's not running water. So, you know, we gotta be careful what we do. Yes, as a homeless person, we don't have running water. So, when I go into the bathrooms daily, I play in the water. Oh, yeah. That's just common sense. So, if somebody said the children are in the bathroom playing in the water because there's no wonder what, there's no big deal about that. I'm moving on. School board member, stay right where you are. Now, the FBI are watching all of you guys attacking the school board members. You gotta be careful. Many blessings. May God bless you all. Stand firm. We're now living in very, very critical times. You must help the school board members. Don't come in here and assault them. This is America. Yes, you have your First Amendment rights. You're not supposed to come here and attack these people. They are on their wings. They're on their seats. Good night.
Excuse me, ma'am.
I'm sorry, please. Just letting you know, this, this really needs to go for next time. It's, it's, it's real bad.
Ms. Susan, this is your first warning.
Warning me about what?
Please, just make your comment.
Oh, I'll make my comment. Anyway, I'm so glad I have three minutes. I really don't know exactly what I'm going to say, but, you know, we've got Hispanic Month, we've got Black Awareness Month, we've got this, we've got that, we've got gay, we've got straight, we've got all that. You know what? Just stop this madness. I want Italian-American Month, okay? And I want autism awareness month. Okay, now, that's a real problem. All this other stuff, that's just drama. You're not getting down to the bare bone facts of a good education and teaching these kids to just, just, just treat them all equally. You don't have to acknowledge any certain population. That's garbage. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of all of you. I'm tired of coming to these meetings. I couldn't come to the last meeting because my son is in crisis again. He is a senior in high school. And all I could do was listen at home and listen to you all throw each other under the bus. It's disgusting. We need to get rid of all of y'all, including the attorney who I won't name, but yeah, it's an attorney, and just, we need to regroup, get people from the community, and just start a whole new board. Why do you have to have a lot of money to be a board member? That's really ridiculous. And you know, and right now, I want to talk to the people of special needs kids. If you have someone in the Lee County school district, get them out immediately. I am from New England originally and I had heard how horrible the school system is in Florida and I never took that into consideration until I had my child here in Fort Myers, got his diagnosis, and had him going up, up through the ranks in school, getting a crappy education. The IEPs are nothing but smoke and mirrors. And now I find out, within the last two weeks, a new diagnosis on my child and I'm wondering why in the hell he can't get through senior year in high school. It was worse than when I was told I had cancer. And I have him through all this special treatment, stuff that I don't even know how I'm going to pay for. And all of you all want to bicker about all the stuff that's not necessary. Well, you know what? This is necessary. I just found out, in the last year, we have now got a neuropsychologist in the school district and I'm going to ask all of you all, why did it take so long? When I haven't worked in 10 years and I'm looking for people to help me medically, someone should have spotted this in the school system. This stinks. You stink. You also got one.
Mr. Nealon.
Can you please start my time again? Good evening. I believe in everyone's right to free speech, but I don't believe that frees you from the immunity of consequences of your words, especially when you are an elected official representing over 9,000 students. When you speak such hatred and bigotry, you have to face the community and those that you have injured with those words. Regrettably, this is not District 3's first rodeo. This board member has a long history of making false allegations, participating in the entrapment of board members, and making false allegations of police investigations against respected citizens that were untrue, abusing her powers by manipulating staff to participate in condescend investigations to take out board members, and all her boorish, and I say again, boorish, behavior. Physically assaulting a board member after a board meeting because that board member requested an investigation into corruption, hindering and interfering with the outcome of investigations related to corruption, lying to the public about achievement rates and the entire quadruple A project. If we don't do something now, who will be next? In August of 2021, this board member was dissenting vote against Hispanic History Month, yet she signed it for all the other ethnic racial groups. I find that really interesting. No one should stand for this marginalization and treatment of students. Last week, I received District 3's letter she wrote to the FSBA where she admitted that she was sick. In this letter, she begged them for help and that she wanted to learn. Well, we don't need someone in the school district who is mentally unstable, creating policies and making decisions over millions of dollars. If she needs that help, she needs to seek that help outside the district, not while she's a board member collecting money, taxpayers' monies. The letter, the next letter that was written on Friday and sent by the high school principals was in response to her absurd racist statements of Guatemalans children. They requested board members not speak on their behalf without requesting definitive information. The board member, this board member blamed Carl Burnside.
Excuse me, ma'am.
I personally do not believe that any principal said this at all, but she is going around saying it. We cannot forget the abuse of power and the misuse of office when Block Lee was swapped for Three Oaks Parkway with the board member giving false statements related to Parkland as to why the site needs to be moved. These abuses caused her inequities between Lehigh and Astero. These are civil rights violations under the Department of Justice. This needs to be investigated. She needs to resign. She needs to resign tonight. And I will be back every board meeting requesting her resignation. We all will be.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comments.
First, I'd like to thank you all for coming and speaking your words. We do hear what you have to say. Mr. Juarez, I'm sorry that no one has gotten back with you. Dr. Savage, I know we were intending to do that, so that still will be taking place. As far as all of our lighthouse investigations, they have all been completed and our attorney, Quick, who is the conflict attorney, will be contacting everyone to whoever was involved with those investigations and clearing those all out. And again, we, and our staff, we do support, we do support our staff and we cannot wait for the day that we can open doors again, to have volunteers in there, to make it easier so that, you know, it takes less stress off of the schools, each and every one, regardless of what position that you play in the district, whether it's teaching, the kitchen, riding those buses, everybody is important and we do appreciate each and every one of you. So, I never would want anybody to ever feel that we do not because we do. And without all of us together working in the district, this is how we keep going. So, again, I really truly do appreciate each and every one of you. The next is the approval of the consent action items. Next is the approval of the action items and the agenda under consent. The documentation for our action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all the materials and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshop with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business table items portion of the agenda? Ms. Giovanelli?
I have none.
Ms. Patrica? Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
I have none this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
I have none.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
I have none.
Thank you. And Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
And I have none. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda consent items?
I move that we approve the consent and agenda items as printed.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. May I have a second, please?
I second that.
Thank you, Ms. Javonelli. Okay, and please record your vote.
Do we get discussion?
There was no discussion on anything. Ms. Roman, do you see them? Oh, I see them. Thank you. Okay, 7-0, motion carries. Dr. Savage, please introduce any administrators in attendance with a new assignment that were approved under the consent agenda.
It would be my pleasure, Madam Chair. I'd first like to recognize Mary Romo, who is joining us as the Early Childhood Learning Services Director at the Early Childhood Learning Services. I'd also like to recognize Richard Carr, who's joining us as the Director of Professional Standards. And Mr. John Nolan, who's from South Fort Myers High as a teacher to the Fort Myers Middle Academy Assistant Principal.
Thank you very much. If you want to stay, you're welcome to stay. Otherwise, we're going to take just a second to allow anyone who wishes to leave the opportunity to do so. And congratulations to all of you. We are up to board members' comments, and I will start with Ms. Fisher. Please, and thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank all who came to speak and share their thoughts and opinions with us. We appreciate that. I would like to also offer thanks to all of our students, staff, parents, and community supporters who have gone above and beyond during these past months with the pandemic and other issues. And we value you, we appreciate you, and keep up the good work. Thank you. On October 27th, here in the boardroom, the Drug Free Coalition will be presenting the Red Ribbon Awards to our students who have excelled in athletics and arts. And we would like to invite you to attend. It begins at 7 o'clock.
Ms. Fisher, continue, please.
Yes, thank you. October 20th tomorrow is Unity Day. It supports and recognizes that October is National Bully Prevention Month, and we ask our kids to wear orange T-shirts and to support and demonstrate kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. At this time, I would like to share some thoughts with my fellow board members and members of the audience. It's taken from the FISH philosophy, from the Pike Place Fish Market in Seattle, and...
Ms. Fisher, can you, is it possible to pull that?
I'm sorry. Is this better? Okay, I'd like to share these thoughts on the FISH philosophy from the Pike Place Fish Market in Seattle. It starts with relationships. Number one, choose your attitude. No matter what the day throws at you, you can choose how you respond. Number two, be there. When people need you, they need all of you. Be fully present. Number three, make their day. Find simple ways to show people that you value them. Play. Bring a spirit of enthusiasm, creativity, and fun to your work. You'll accomplish a lot more. We are challenged with diversity and adversity. We can build caring relationships and lift one another up. This is a community that's in this altogether. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher? Ms. Javonelli?
Can, can you, can I pass?
Sure.
I need to, take care.
Okay.
Sorry.
Ms. Patrica?
Unfortunately for my colleagues, I've got a lot of updates to give you, and it's going to take me a little while to get through this. So you all received the Florida School Boards Association letter in response to the NSBA letter regarding references to parents and community members that show up to school board meetings being referred to as domestic terrorists. We have taken a strong stand against that letter for a number of purposes, or for a number of reasons, I should say. The first is there have been significant governance issues with NSBA for quite some period of time. That letter was sent without consultation with anyone in the association. The executive committee, the board of directors, nobody was consulted. Compare and contrast that to FSBA, where I would say we deliberated the letter we sent for at least two hours, and it was a unanimous decision by the board to send the letter. We have not paid our dues at all this year, not just in response to this NSBA letter, but in response to the other governance issues. We, I know, I am confident that our local law enforcement, who comes in here every single week and keeps us safe, are up for the job and are capable of following through with the appropriate agencies should, should something more occur. While we have had some incidents of incivility in the boardroom, they have been dealt with appropriately, and federal intervention is not necessary. I would like my colleagues to think about reviewing not just the letter, but the resolution. And I plan to, I plan to read the resolution at our next meeting, and, you know, you decide whether you want to individually show support for that or not. Next, I want to thank Mary Reader for keeping us on track with regard to our advisory committees. She is phenomenal, sending out those friendly, gentle reminders as, you know, sometimes her emails get buried. I want to thank our high school principals for the leadership they showed in sending us that letter yesterday. It's a group, that group is, you know, all principals really are frontline leaders. They are on the front line every single day during this really unprecedented time, and they are operating at the very highest levels. And they've done so without complaint. And I really appreciate their leadership, not just during this difficult time in each of our buildings, but I also appreciate the courage that it took for them to send that letter to us. So I will work to support them and to give them the respect that they deserve. Excellent work to Dr. Spiro and, excuse me, Leisha Roy and team for the opt-out letter for parents. I know that that was a lot of work, but the work he put out was incredibly comprehensive, and I recognize that the work is not complete and that you will have to continue to put that work in, but I really appreciate it, so thank you. The reason why I asked for comments during the consent agenda is I did have a chance to read the MOUs just barely before we voted on them, and I noticed there was no mention of vaccines in them, and I was able to confer with Dr. Savage that that is not off the table, and I will continue to suggest that. As Duval County recently did, we offer incentives for vaccines so that we can more quickly reach herd immunity. More excellent work by the calendar committee. It was just unbelievably amazing to go and sit in that room and watch our administrators from schools, from the district, union leadership, teachers, paras, bus drivers, talk it through. And, and what was so evident to me was the high level of expertise that they each have in their own, in their own area. And it's always so refreshing, I've said this to Dr. Savage several times, when you put staff in front of us and let them shine, it just, it really opens my eyes to the work that we really should be engaged in here at the board table. Donna Mutzenard and Kerfazone did an amazing job of the interest-based bargaining process. Just being surrounded by those professionals was incredibly refreshing to me. I do have a question for Attorney DePreb. Bruno, you do not have to answer this right now. I'm just looking for an update on the chat feature in Zoom, and given the fact that you have an update.
So I am going to be meeting with all of the chairs to explain to them. I talked to Pat Gleason, who is the guru on Sunshine and Public Records at the Attorney General's Office, who advises us not to do the chat.
Okay, so you're going to talk to the chairs.
And honestly, if my, if the board was requesting a chat in the chat box or something like that, I would absolutely say no. So it's the same thing for the board advisory committees.
And, and given the fact that those chats are automatically savable, what is it about it that violates Sunshine?
We can, we can discuss that offline a little bit, but there is concern.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you. And then I do have, the rest of my comments are directed to, to the Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee, but I understand that Ms. Vaughn is going to raise that issue, so I think it might be more appropriate for me to respond then. Madam Chair, how would you like me to handle that?
That would be fine.
Okay. So those are my comments for now.
Ms. Javonelli, are you prepared now, or shall I continue?
Well, I, I was gonna, Attorney Bruno had asked me to make a comment, so after Ms. Vaughn, so mine, I'm going to piggyback off that a little bit. Sorry.
I wasn't, I wasn't put in the, in the loop, so let's, let's try this one. Ms. Gittens?
May we please, Ms. Vaughn keeps coming up.
Okay, Ms. Vaughn, I'm going to have you speak.
I was just going to ask, can we go to the hurt next?
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Okay. Well, are you ready, Ms. Vaughn?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I do feel obligated, I guess it's the teacher in me, to give a piece of information to the several speakers tonight that were talking about the list, the, as it was dubbed, the porn list of books that are in our libraries. Just a couple things, and I'm just saying this for informational purposes. First of all, keep in mind that the word pornography has a very, very specific meaning legally. And book lists, as I said during the last meeting, the banned book lists that come out through the American Library Association yearly, these are books that are not banned, so these are challenged books. And it is kind of interesting to look at why certain schools decided to challenge certain books. There are other organizations, there, there are other organizations that publish their own lists. And typically, what you have on these lists are reasons. Now, I know that because the board was copied on this email, that at least several of you in the audience, or who have been in our audience, have received from academic services the, a way to lodge your protest. And so we have a system. Dr. Spiro sent out the process document that we've had for quite a while in this district, and the process that any individual who wants to challenge a book, whether it be in our libraries or in, as part of our curriculum, there is a form to fill out. So I, I just, because it sounds like that some of you were unaware of that, I wanted to make everybody aware that there is a process document and that there is a form. And I can tell you, from my own personal experience, having been a department chair for 19 years in Adalis, Texas, suburban high school, and we were involved in a number of challenges of books. So this whole idea of a form and a process is, is not something draconian that this district is putting out there. It's, it's typical policy for a large school district. I have talked to a couple people that were supporting that list, and I was, it was interesting to find out that they hadn't read the books. And I actually went to the public library after we received the list, and I checked out seven or eight of the books. And I have gone through two picture books, which I honestly had to go through them a couple times to see what possibly could be the problem with the picture book. And I have actually read three of the longer books, which are probably middle school level. And interestingly, two of the books that Mrs. Divigeli mentioned were actually books that I just read. The one, I'll just say this, and she can contact me, and we could have a personal discussion on it, Diary of a Part-Time Indian, The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian. That's a national book award book. Not sure what book reviews she read, but the ones that I read were glowing. It's the kind of book that has lots and lots of issues that, that I think are important issues. So the other thing I might say, and again, not judgmental, I'm just saying this for information, when you read these, when you look at them, please think about the overall messages the books sent out. Okay? And drama is, is another one. And, and just for the individual who mentioned about schools of the past teaching values and, you know, I went to school in the 1950s, elementary school, and we did have short Bible verses that, that we read, but, you know, I don't remember, you know, religious teaching in the schools. And here's another interesting fact. If you look at some banned books, quote unquote banned books, the Bible, the whole, Christian, the holy Bible, has been, in some cases, banned. So it's a very, very complex issue, and I totally support a parent's right to monitor and to advise for their children on what is, goes with their own family values. But do, do keep in mind that, well, I think Ward Cleaver is still here, that we have...
Ms. Vaughn, please.
I know. I'm sorry. Couldn't help it, little humor sometimes, that we are in a different era, and, and there are those of us that may actually wish for times gone by, but we, we really, and this is something that we do as a school district, we need to move with the times. And, and again, there are things that, when I look back at my years of, early years of teaching, and I wish, oh my gosh, I wish it weren't this way now, but again, we have to move with the times, and we here at this school district, that's, that's what we're doing while respecting parents' rights, but there is a process on that. All right, so I am the liaison, the board liaison to the Equity and Diversity Committee. And we met, or the committee met a week ago, actually, a week ago Monday, October 11th. And... And there were several constituents, actually, that were there, and we had, one, two, three, four, we had five people with public comment. And on the agenda for that meeting, Dr. Savage was there, and, and he gave an outline, kind of an overview of his career, and how he chose education, and then did talk about, in, within his career, about the role of diversity and, you know, his, just his experiences. And I would say it was by way of an introduction, since usually at the board meetings, at the, I'm sorry, at the committee meetings, usually the superintendent will, will speak. There was a, an excellent presentation also by Dr. Decimours, Susan Millay, and they did a brief presentation on Small Business Enterprise Program. And they talked about how this program is there to foster economic growth and to create jobs. And of course, another thing that we are proud of in this district is our various partners, and certainly with our emphasis on career and technical training, this, it's very, very important that we have these kinds of partnerships. Now, something else that occurred during this time, we've had a lot of comments this evening about board member District Three, and I want to, I'm going to, so I don't misquote anything, read to you the exact, the exact motions that were made and passed unanimously by Equity and Diversity Committee. All right. So, and then I'll tell you the action, or the, what I'm about to put forward. All right. So this is from the recording secretary. The committee unanimously approved a motion, quote, "to condemn the statements about Guatemalan students from Board Member Patrika and recommend that the board take every possible action to hold the board member accountable, not to be limited to a vote of no confidence and an official investigation." That was the first thing that they voted on, and it was unanimous. The other thing was the unanimous approval of a motion in the Equity and Diversity Committee, quote, "to recommend that Board Member Patrika consider resignation from the board." Now, I'm passing this information along to my fellow board members, actually, I already passed, passed the information on to them last night, and I've made a revision on, on some of it today, so hopefully everybody read that. And I, I know that some of the board, some of my colleagues have actually watched that meeting. Okay? So it is, as are all our advisory meetings, it is on, online for the Lee School YouTube. All right. So as the board liaison, to fulfill my obligation, I am passing along to you that the committee unanimously said, this is from them, to have Board Member Patrika consider resignation from the board. And the other thing is that they condemned the statements that the board member made. Now, what they also wanted was to have the board hold Board Member Patrika accountable. And I think part of it may have been they wanted the board to be accountable, or to go on record with, with the statements. Initially, I sent an email out that I was going to make a motion to, to just using the language that was directed to me as the board liaison, but Attorney Dupree Bruno, and I had talked with her actually before I ever wrote this email, and then she did some research, and she and I talked again earlier today, and she sent to the board a case, a litigation that's, that's going on right now. And so I am not going to make that motion. And again, this is a motion that I, that I said to the EDAC that I was, you know, going to follow their wishes, but there are issues on, on that. Attorney Dupree Bruno, did you want to, is it appropriate for you to tell about that case at this point?
Sure. Let me pull it up, and I'll share it. The case is Wilson versus Houston Community College, U.S. Court of Appeals, Fifth Circuit, 2020. And basically, in this case, Mr. Wilson was a member of a board of trustees of a public community college. The board publicly censured him for publicly criticizing another board member. Wilson then sued the board. The Supreme Court, well, this is the ruling, part of the ruling from the Fifth Circuit. It states, "The Supreme Court has long stressed the importance of allowing elected officials to speak on matters of public concern." The order further states, "As a result, this court has held that censures of publicly elected officials can be a cognizable injury under the First Amendment." The court further stated, "The court noted that a formal reprimand, by its very nature, goes several steps beyond criticism, accusation, and even beyond a mere investigation. It is punitive in a way that mere criticism, accusations, and investigations are not." This case has been accepted by the United States Supreme Court for review. The briefs were provided in July of 2021, 2021, so we're waiting to see what the U.S. Supreme Court says. But at this point, based on this federal case, censoring because of a public statement made by an elected official exposes the district to liability for violation of a First Amendment right.
Okay. And of course, I did, that's, that's very serious, and I took it to heart. You know, the EDAC committee doesn't have a board attorney there to talk about these legal opinions right then and there. But what I did tell the board that I was going to do, and a few of my colleagues have referenced this, is that I did want to open this up for board comments, and before, you know, through our chair, of course, but I did want to mention that during our last action meeting, there was actually a motion for an investigation, and that motion that failed in, in the vote. So are we good to open it at this point to any commentary? Chair Jordan?
Yes, I, I definitely will. Ms. Freebro.
I'm done, and I'll give it back to you.
Thank you. I just want to make sure there's no motion on the table. Does the board give, give consensus for us to move forward with this conversation as requested by EDAC?
Yes, there's no motion on the, I've made no motion.
Right. They're just comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure which direction we need to take. My thought is, with respect to our board advisory board, community comment from EDAC, some board members, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, asking for some type of sanctioning. I do understand that censoring would only put us in a position to be sued, but my thought is a request to the governor to investigate abuse of power. And the reason I say that, please understand that, to me, behaviors of some board members is systemic. It is just continuous. As recently as the last meeting, as recently as today, when I asked, you know, about giving a, a command to one of, to the attorney, and the response was, well, I, I thought I was getting something just for me. I don't know how we get it across to all the board members, the, the idea that was strongly in place when I was the chair of this board, that consistently I was told, we do not operate individually, over and over. You can go back and watch the videos. There was no, I would ask to do one thing, is we don't operate as an individual, we operate as a board. But just continually, it happens with other board members. If we cannot ask for some type of a control, or some type of, not control, but just finding a, how do we stop that? Or do we not? We just are allowing it to go on. It's, it's, you know, I told someone today, it's like, I feel like a battered spouse, you know? You get slapped in the face and you're told, well, it's okay, I didn't mean it, and you smile, and you go out, and you slap me again. And it's just, we keep going over the same thing. I, I don't know what the answer is. I know that many of us have been investigated and all of that type of thing. So the only option is the governor, the governor, because that's the only entity over us, but from FSBA and the state, all the way down to community members and everyone, there, there needs to be an answer. It is just systemic. And I, I'm sorry, Ms. Patrika, I'm not trying to throw you under the bus, but it is, it's just very disturbing to me, the behavior. And I just, I feel we need to do something. I know I probably won't have the votes to do it, but if there's nothing to hide, then why don't we find out, is there an abuse of power? If it comes back and it's not, then we sit down and we shut up. But, you know, consistently saying, do this, do this, and behind the scenes, you know, we don't often say it up here, but we know there's a lot of behind the scenes stuff. There has been ever since I sat on this board. And how do I know? Because the same behaviors that I get from, some of the board members I get from staff. So I know it's consistent. And I, community, I am not arguing, I am not fussing and fighting, I am very calmly asking, what can we do? There has been, you know, things happening against so many people, and against, we are, you know, minority majority, that just, we have to face it. And I don't feel, like, I read the letter from FSBA with their apology, and I honestly don't believe that we should have someone in charge of an organization that is having OJT, you know, learning on the job how to deal with people. So that's, that's my stance on it. I, I don't know where it's gonna go, but I felt I needed to say it.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Chivelli, I know you said you were waiting for.
Well, yes. So actually, the letter we received today from the Guatemalan U.S. Florida Chamber of Commerce, I was just gonna bring that forward as well. How do we respond to Mr. Juarez? And I see, I think he's left this evening.
Yes.
So, but I, I had it on my, you know, in my notes to bring that up, so that we could have discussion, so I wanted to piggyback off of that, once this discussion, you know, I think we need to respond, or meet with him, you know, and I don't know how, those would be my recommendations, I don't know who, which one of us should meet with him, but I think that we need to, we, we cannot be silent. That's what I think. So I'll open that up for someone to have a discussion on that.
Thank you. And then, as I had said, that Dr. Savage will be reaching out to him, so that way we can make sure that we set up time to speak with him. So that will be definitely taking place.
Yes, we actually already gave him one of the cards, and there's already been some contact.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll just take, I'll, I have a few notes, and I'm gonna say what I think, but I've already, you know, two weeks ago, I was pretty clear on how I felt about it, but, you know, I just, I'll just bring this back around just a little bit more. You know, for the past few weeks, it's been very difficult, and then it's caused me to reflect a great deal about the dynamics of our board. I know we had a team building today, so I know we're, we're trying to put things back in a better perspective, but it's not my nature to create conflict, because I prefer to work collaboratively, collaboratively, but I feel that we've been left with no choice because of what has occurred over the last three and a half years, really, things that's happened on this board. This just didn't, doesn't come down to the one incident that happened a couple weeks ago. This board is, has, we've had many meetings, and, and things have happened that's, honestly, it's like, what's it, irreconcilable differences? I mean, we just can't come to an agreement on things, or see eye to eye, and I just feel like, sometimes it's like that one bad apple spoils the whole bunch, you know? And so I, I, and until that apple can identify the situation, I don't know how we can move on. And I sat today in, with our meeting that we had, you know, board team building, but I don't know that we're all on the same page. And, and we, and we should be embracing our differences, instead of trying to expose people for them being themselves. And it's very difficult, because everyone's different, but everybody is valuable. I said this, this is what, I was, I wrote down notes, because for, for my four years, four and a half years, actually, being on the, on this board, I've never felt valued at all. I walked in here being discredited by the prior administration completely. I've had numerous staff people tell me the things that he would say behind my back, and, and I was supposed to rise above it, and I feel like I did, but it went on. I, I feel today is like a new day with the new superintendent, and I'm very grateful in that. I feel like the, the environment is different. Yet, we have board members still trying to sabotage our new superintendent. And so I feel like we're, now we're starting a vicious cycle, different, but still the same cycle, still the same culture. And so that's, those are the things that concern me. How do we move past it? Because I was accused of being, not being in my lane, and alls I did was listen to two employees that wanted to tell me the things that were happening to them in the maintenance department, and that became an investigation against Melissa, instead of investigation in, in the maintenance department. I mean, that's the things that are manipulated constantly for an outcome that's not even a real outcome. It's a, it's a totally fabricated one. And so I'm excited about the new professional standards, Mr. Carr. I'm excited about, you know, like, again, it's a new day, and I, so I, I want to embrace a new day, right? But it takes all of us to do that on this board. So I'm just gonna leave it at that, but here's what I'm concerned with. We've all had our head in the sand for a very long time. We've never held anyone accountable, including the We've never held anyone accountable, including the prior superintendent, that we should have done. And so, accountability is huge. We need to be held accountable. We can't keep our head in the sand any longer. So we're, we're, it starts here at this table. Because, and when, when you have, and I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna hold my hand, fingers up. RSM that fired us because of the board. A prior board attorney quit because of the board. Principals have wrote us a letter because of the board. Our own board attorney and our superintendent is being harassed and being put in a toxic environment. That's five things that are very bad, that puts us liable at some point. We could be liable. And that scares me completely, because we are not doing our job. And I'm gonna hold myself just as much accountable, because it's seven, we're seven people, and to act as one. And I am concerned. We did nothing, we just stayed quiet, when our own board attorney told us about the environment that she's dealing with. We stayed quiet when I brought it up. The superintendent told me that his environment is becoming harassment. These are our employees that I, we, we know what happened with RSM, because they won't even be our, our employee. So now that's the three employees that we hire. So that is alarming. That is alarming. Because that's who, that's only, the only people that we do govern. We do not govern anyone else in this district. That is his job. And I am here to make sure that he can do his job, she can do her job, and we can find an auditor that'll do our job. I don't even know if we're capable of doing that, because of this board. So, yes. I tried to make a stand two weeks ago, because we need to be held accountable. And that's where I'll leave it. I challenge this board to be accountable. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher, did you have any comments?
Not at this time.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
I'm not gonna make any at this time, no.
Um, I don't even know where I'm right here. Oh, I know, Ms. Patrica, you wanted to...
So, yes, I did watch the video, Ms. Vaughn, and I appreciate you sharing that information with the board, and I would like to direct my comments to the Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee. I do understand the condemnation of my words, and I accept that. I also understand EDAC's request for me to step down from the school board, and while I certainly did consider their request, I, I do not believe that that is the best course of action. Doing so would mean that I'm willing to walk away from the difficult issues in the equity space that really do need to be addressed for our students, our staff, and our community. What I am, what I hope you all understand is that I know that I'm bold, and I know that I'm direct. I know that. It's, it's who I am, and it's how I come across to people, and I've said this a million times, I'm not everybody's cup of tea. I'm frequently told, Ms. Fisher, Chris, it's not what you say, it's how you say it. And Ms. Fisher, I believe, would attest to the fact that I own that, and I am working really hard on that. I think we can all relate, everybody in this room, everybody in the world can relate to saying things inartfully at times. I know that my comments sound bad when you hear them in the clip video. I, I know that. And I really want people to understand, again, as I said two weeks ago, where my heart is. I had absolutely no intention of hurting anyone, and I am deeply, deeply sorry that I have hurt people's feelings. I am deeply sorry for that. When I spoke with the community group, I was trying to bring light to a real problem, a real problem that our students face. I was talking to a group of people who don't operate in our space, the world of public education. They, they don't necessarily understand the intricacies of the issues that we deal with, but the facts are, and, and I'm, I'm often criticized for being too data-focused and too analytical, so I tried to tell an anecdote, and I'm gonna go back to being factual. The fact is that year after year, we have increasing numbers of students moving to Lee County from other countries where the English language is not the official language. In, in the school year 2016-17, we had 9,089 English-language learners in the school district of Lee County. In the school year 2021, we had 13,387. That is a 47.3% increase in English-language learners in just five years. If you look at the 2019-2020 to the 2021 school year, you'll see that we had a 16.6% increase in English-language learners. This data illustrates that we do have students who come to our district, significant numbers of students who come to our district, who do in fact speak English as a second language. We do in fact have students who come to our district who face difficulties in terms of technological and infrastructure and societal changes when they move to the United States. These are true challenges for our students. They are real, they are true, and we as a district struggle to solve those problems. They are issues that stand in the way of our students being able to receive the world-class education that we are so proud of. I was trying to help the group with which I was speaking to understand the challenges that our students face, and the challenges that our district faces when they're solving, trying to solve those problems. I cannot take my words back. I cannot do that. I cannot unsay what I said. But I can ask EDAC if they would be willing to actually meet with me, and have a conversation with me, about not just this issue, but a lot of the other issues that face our students. I'd like, I'd like to bring these statistics to EDAC and help them analyze the statistics in the context of our students' experiences, so that they can make recommendations to the board on how we can help our students through their transition when they move to Lee County. Clearly, we're not doing enough. Given the high level of public awareness surrounding my comments, I don't know that Lee County has ever spoken this much about our English-language learners. I think this is an opportunity that we should seize to actually find a way to solve the problem. And again, I would ask that respectfully, ask that EDAC give me the opportunity to come in, speak with them, create true equity in this space, and ensure that every single one of our students can achieve a world-class education. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Prerie Bruno?
Ms. Patrica, what about the students? Do you have a message for the students? Those that were, for example, I heard tonight that there was 2,000 Guatemalan students in our district, and those students also heard the word. This is conversations that's going on in the household. What about, do you have something to say to the kids?
Yeah, well, I mean, obviously, I'm sorry to the students, but I'm working behind the scenes to set up...
Could you guys please allow her to speak and be respectful?
I'm working behind the scenes to set up tours of community groups, community centers, and schools with high concentrations of Guatemalan students. So, I mean, that's, that's the work I'm trying to do on that end, to connect better with students and understand the challenges that they face, so that we can find solutions.
I, I think that the, the prob, I'll call you one second, Ms. Gittens. The problem that I see is that these are our children, all of them. And I don't think they were hurt, more so offended by the comments that were made. So I think that we have to make sure that we are, all of these are, they're not challenges, we have to look at everything as an opportunity, to make sure that we are giving every one of our kids what they need. We have to make sure that we're embracing them regardless of who they are, where they're from. I'm looking at all my pictures here. I feel like I'm like you now. Sorry. But this is, I'm looking at, it's a melting pot. That's my family. Ms. Gittens, go.
Okay. I'm gonna do something right now, and I wasn't going to, but it really bothers me for Ms. Patrica, for you to say that what your actions and your words are good because it brought light to a situation with our students. I'm sorry, I, I can't. I'm gonna make a motion that we contact the governor's office to find out, is there anything as far as looking into the abuse of power, or is there anything at all that as a board we can do about systemic issues with board members? I'm, I'm laying it out there. That, that was a straw for me.
I'm sorry, so what's your motion?
That we contact the governor's office to at least see what recourse we may have into looking into, is it abuse of power, or what, is there anything that could be done? I know we can't sanction, but what our possibilities may be. I'm sorry.
I'll second that then. Thank you.
Discussion. I'm gonna start the discussion. I don't think it's abuse of power. I think it's just, and I'm sorry to say this, it was just stupid comments. It just, really, we have to really think about what we say. Was it intentional? We only know. I mean, only you would know what comes out of your, you know, your mouth. I know you were having a conversation with, with whomever they were. However, we have to make sure that it's not just, it is not just the parents, it is the kids as well. So we have to make sure that those kids understand that they're looking at us, so they have to make sure that, that you do care about them as well, and not, not just beside, behind the scenes. And I know that, I don't think that you're evil at all, because I know that you're, you've taken other children in, and you're good-hearted in that respect for children. But we have to make sure that we understand that. I, I just think that, and we all say stupid things, we all say comments that we wish to God we'd never said, you know, but it comes out of our mouth, but it's what we do afterwards. It's how do we, how do we resolve what we did say? What do we do to make that understood that, you know, I did make a mistake? How do we correct that? And that's what I think that we need to do. And is it from, you know, is it, and I know you're not a mushy person, but sometimes people see that as, you know, not being concerned or heartfelt, because we're all individuals, and we all react differently. So I, I don't think it's abuse of power. Ms. Givinelli?
So, I'm just gonna go down my list, because I, I have it. You know, the last board meeting validated what has been going on for a very, very, very long time. There's been a few of us on this board that, just like me, for the past three and a half years, I've tried to bring ethics and transparency to the community, because that's, this is what the community expects and wants. This is what we're supposed to be doing. The fact that one board member made three motions over a period of several months to force the former superintendent to explain how the water-miking incident even came about, that's one, that was one issue that this board never dealt with. A board member here tried, she tried several times. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. I would like to thank that board member, because it's so important to be courageous. And we must continue to try to bring ethics and transparency on this board, and we're compelled to, as a board, to do it, for the needs of our district, and the students, and the community. It's basically always fallen on deaf ears, as I said earlier. You know, we have a school built in Benita Springs, it's been brought to our attention, and now we're having a middle school being built, when that's really not where the need is. So it's not just this one incident with Guatemalan students, is my point. And I brought up five other really important reasons I feel that could be a problem if this behavior continues. So I encourage the board to think about this. Think about what EDAC has said and made a statement. I think that's important for EDAC, for us to listen to our advisory committee. So I'm trying to make, trying to think what else I had. It's just important for, for us to, at what point, her apology is for this, but what about, there's been no other apologies for anything else prior to this. And there, we just had spent, I don't, I would like to know the amount for the nine investigations that we went outside investigations, which I believe she was involved in a couple of those, and that's a whole nother conversation. So there is an abuse of power here, if you start looking at the history. Thank you.
Ms. Prerie Bruno, if you can please guide us a little bit. I know that this came out of Ms. Vaughn's comments, which was in regards to EDAC. EDAC was regarding comments that were made and statements only. It was not about abuse of power, it was not about investigations, it was not about anything else that is being discussed at this moment. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, there, there was some, a little bit of mention about a few other things, and I think that was in, in response to the public comment from, from that night. But the actual motions, as, as I said, the actual, just to go back and, and to be clear, two of them, we've already, they've already dealt with the suggestion to resign and the condemnation of, of the statement. What they asked me to actually bring forward, however, I, I think we have two different topics going on here, and actually, I was about to ask the question to clarify exactly, you know, how, how the statements were abuse of, of power. I, I can see, I can see a small connection with other issues that came out of that, but no, you're, you're correct, they were not asking regarding other...
I just want a clarification on that, and Ms. Prerie Bruno?
Ms. Jordan, so there's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. You've heard from Ms. Givinelli, you've heard from Ms. Patrica, you've heard from Ms. Vaughn. I believe Ms. Morgan has not spoken...
And then Ms. Fisher.
And then Ms. Fisher, and then you call, we'll have to open it up to public comment.
You haven't heard from me based on the motion, and I don't think, I think that because my name is in the motion, I'm not permitted to deliberate or vote. Is that correct?
It's, I'm more comfortable if you don't deliberate, and you certainly have to abstain from the vote.
But my question is the motion...
There's a motion pending, so...
For investigation on...
You've contacted the governor's office to, Ms. Gittens, can you please restate your motion?
And, and let me just clarify this again.
But Ms. Gittens, just because I'm, I'm a little confused, just restate the motion, please.
Okay. The motion is that we contact the governor's office to find out what abilities or anything that we can do regarding an abuse, a possible abuse of power of a board member, that, and I didn't even, that's the motion, but I didn't even go into the things like speaking on behalf of the board, having this insignia behind stating facts that weren't, that weren't proven. So that's my motion.
So we have a second. Ms. Jordan, if, make sure that every board member has an opportunity to speak. We have to open it up to public comment, and then go straight for the vote.
Thank you.
Now, I normally do not jump into these things. However, as we are moving forward, which is what we're supposed to be doing, which we spent the entire afternoon discussing, I, I want to make sure that the board thinks about that as well. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So you move forward with your process, you have a parliamentary process, you have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Ms. Jordan, if you can move forward with the discussions and open it up for public comment.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Okay, so really, there are two things that we're talking about here. So referring back to our conversation this afternoon, what is the question? The question is, does the community have confidence in us, and is the board credible? And I would ask board members if they feel that this conversation inspires confidence in the part of the community, and if it...
in the part of the community and if it lends credibility to us. Now, I, first of all, with respect to what Ms. Vaughn talked about, because this is all, I don't know how to separate these things out. The mission of the School Board Equity and Diversity Committee is to monitor the district's adherence to school board policies concerning equity and diversity, and they have always done a great job. And I would assume that this conversation that they had really was with respect to the board's policy on non-discrimination. So that being the case, then I look to what is our code of conduct in our district? What happens when somebody makes a statement that is contra to policy or practice? And what I come down to is restorative practice and the notion of effective communication, conversations focusing on repairing harm and restoring relationships. So to me, that should be, in part, how the Equity and Diversity Committee would explore this matter. And my, I guess my request would be that if we are really going to look at this as a community and talk about it as a community, then as Ms. Patrica said, there needs to be an opportunity for her to speak to the committee. Secondly, I would say that this really, the statement Ms. Patrica made, we have already put out a statement that says we do not condone the statement that was made. It is on Ms. Patrica to build those relationships with the community and to restore trust with the community. I'm concerned that by talking the way we're talking and going down the road we're going down, that by not sticking to what it is, as Attorney DePree Bruno said, by not sticking to the goal, which is to make certain that we act in a way that inspires confidence and makes us credible, that, I just, I'm afraid that what we're doing doesn't do that. And I'm just asking, because that's what we've learned this afternoon. This is what I feel and I'm asking for your response to that. Do we, when a child makes a stupid statement in school, do we expel them? No. We sit in a circle and we talk about how that affected the people who felt that the statement was made to them. What we're doing here is not that. And so that's, I think I've talked enough. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
So first of all, I'm going to say that in the 90s, when I was a school counselor at an elementary school in North Fort Myers, I had an opportunity to work with groups of students who had come to this country from other countries, who were not familiar with the language, the customs, hadn't been in a big building like a school before. Some of the kids were living in migrant camps and were migrant workers. So we had a teacher called an immersion teacher. And the children who came to our school who were monolingual and very inexperienced in this environment were put into a classroom where they were immersed. They talked to other kids who spoke English. They learned how to do some things with different equipment and different materials and, you know, reading and writing and notebooks and things they had really not experienced before. So with that experience in my mind, and we visited the migrant camps and we waited for those kids to come later in the school year and then caught them up on their work and responsibilities because they were up north in the summer and then came here closer to the late fall. And so I had that experience and had an opportunity to visit their homes and, you know, and learn more about where they came from and be able to empathize a little bit with what would it be like? Like, how did I feel when I went to Mexico and I didn't speak the language and I didn't know about the customs? And we went to some places that weren't the tourist places and it was an experience. So with that in mind and having those relationships that I was able to build, in fact, at the last backpack event, some of the kids from one of the families were there with their children who looked exactly now as their parents looked then. Anyway, I just want to say that we have just spent hours regarding this situation. We have made an official statement as a board. FSBA has made an official statement. We have a job to do as a board and not any one individual board member has any power to abuse because we have no authority or power per statute unless we work as a team. A team who recognizes that every kid has the ability and right to a good education and because we can make a difference in the education of children. And I think that we have lost track of our priorities and we are not focusing on what we're here to do, which is to help all of our children regardless of where they come from or how tall or skinny or what color hair they have or anything like that. That is not what we're here for and we are not here for our own personal agendas. And that problem is inhibiting us and not allowing us to do our job as a governance team. And we are not focusing on the kids. I asked a couple of weeks ago, where are the children in all this? We're saying that we're protecting them, but are we really? No, we're not. I have a picture of my family, too. I have eight grandkids and seven great-grandkids. I've been around kids all my life. Taught my first class in 1960. We are off track here and unless we, each one of us, take responsibility for our own behavior and do what we thought we were elected to do and work to provide our students with an education that results in student achievement and kids who are well-adjusted and good citizens, then we might as well all leave because this is not what we're here for. Now, let's call the governor again. We have been investigated ad nauseam. The last letter to the governor, Gwen, how did that work out? I didn't hear any.
It's still in the process.
Please, ladies and gentlemen.
So how many times are we going to be investigating one another and fighting with one another? And what are we accomplishing here? This is not about me. This is not about you guys. This is about us as a responsible elected body, elected to represent the people and provide an education for our students in this district. We're the economic driver of this community. What are we doing? And I do not support calling the governor again.
Ms. Patrica?
I'm not permitted to discuss her.
I thought you said.
May I please respond to what she said since she was referring to me?
Mr. DePree Bruno?
Ms. Gittens, if we can keep it very short.
Because we're going to go to public comment.
Okay. I know, I'm always told, you guys spend more time telling me how much time I have than letting me speak.
Ms. Gittens, go ahead, please.
Okay. The point I want to make is that it is not about a comment, one comment that was made. This is a systemic issue. It's about a person that screamed in my face to tell me to follow the rules. It's about a person who sat and tallied the number of times I said "I" in a meeting. Okay? And yes, I set it out. It's not about one thing. And it's, it just bothers me that when it comes to certain people on the board, calling the governor is not an issue, but on others it is. So I'm sorry, like I said, what pushed me over the edge is saying that making that statement brought light to a situation.
Ms. Vaughn? And then we'll go to public comment.
I've been listening to this and before Ms. Gittens spoke, I would say that maybe 5% of what Ms. Fisher said was directed to this motion. And I think we still, and honestly, this was a problem that I had two weeks ago when we have the muddy waters, so to speak, that we need to be clear and we need to be focused on only this particular motion. And it was sparked by what I brought forward, what I felt was my duty as the liaison to Equity and Diversity Committee. And it's gone to something entirely different and yet I'm hearing all kinds of comments. So I, you know, I'm having a real problem when the conversation keeps veering in so many different directions as to what exactly we want to do and hearing from my board colleagues specifically on this motion, not editorializing.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. And Ms. Morgan, you had.
I was just going to ask for a break before public comment if we could. We've been sitting, I'm sorry, we've been sitting here for two and a half hours. It's me. I need to go to the bathroom. May I please be excused?
Ms. Ellen? Mr. DePree Bruno? It's okay with the board.
Are you doing? It's up to you, Madam Chair, if you want to take a five-minute recess.
Do all of you need to have a break?
Yes, I had to go earlier.
I disagree, but at the will of the board.
If we could give everybody three minutes, please. Hey, we will resume the meeting and we will now have public comments. Ms. DePree Bruno?
Excuse me, Ms. Gittens, can you please restate the motion?
I wrote it out. Would you mind reading what I wrote out, please?
Okay, it's a motion for, ask the governor to review a systemic, consistent abuse of power and accountability for actions.
Abuse of position.
Abuse of position, I'm sorry.
What was the last part?
I wrote it down, too.
Ms. Jordan, can you read it?
Yes, it's, and this was the second time I asked and so that's why I made sure that I wrote it down. Contact the governor, motion to contact the governor of possible abuse of a board member.
Abuse of power.
No, can you read?
Abuse, contact the governor of possible abuse of a board member.
Can, can you please?
Afterwards, then she went into the whole other stuff.
Point of order, can Attorney DePree Bruno, can you please read what I just gave you?
So you will, the two motions are not the same thing. So what you wrote, if you want, if it's wrong.
I'll remove the first motion and this is the motion that I want to say.
So I have here a motion to contact the governor to investigate a systemic, consistent abuse of power.
I didn't say power.
I mean, I'm sorry.
Position.
Position and accountability for actions. That is the motion. Need a second.
I second that earlier.
You've had discussion.
So now we have to have a discussion again for this new one?
Unless the board wants to waive that since you've pretty much had a similar discussion already and move forward with public comment.
Okay. Is there any discussion regarding this, the new motion?
So at this time, Madam Chair, you can open it up to public comment.
Public comments, please.
If there's anyone who would like to make a comment on the pending motion, please line up.
And has that motion been given to Ms. Roman? So that way she has the correct one? I just want to make sure she has the.
This is position.
And Ms. DePree Bruno? Can you please refer to how, minutes and?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Minutes.
Oh.
Speaking and.
Well, it's going to be three minutes per person. It will be three minutes per person. And the motion that is pending does not have a board member's name. So the, I will continue to ask that you refrain from utilizing a name.
And it's only speaking on this exact motion?
And this is only about the pending motion. And make sure, please state your name for the record.
My name is Yvonne Ritzinger and I have been listening to this silliness juvenile discussion about a situation that apparently goes. discussion about a situation that apparently goes much beyond some derogatory and discriminatory comments made by one board member. This is a situation that has a cancer, and when you have a cancer, you cut it out. There is no reason for there to be continuing discussion. This is my fourth board meeting, and this has gone on every single board meeting. Some of you have to have, excuse the language, but some balls. I don't understand why a couple of you are talking about things that you experienced in 1990, when another board member tells us that we have to get with the program of today's work, today's environment. You have a board member that has talked tonight about no one but herself, and how she reacts, and what, how it affected her. She said nothing about anyone else. It is all about her, and I don't even know her. I just listened to her closely tonight, and you should, too. You guys are not taking the children into consideration at all. I don't care what you say. You can talk, and you can gravitas all you want, but you are not acting civilly, nor even, I mean, it's, I've been a board member, I've been a county board supervisor, and I have never seen anything like this before. Somebody needs to stand up, and I thank a couple of the board members who have said it is not about what she said about one certain group of people. She doesn't care. She never did care. She cares about this person behind the comments. I don't know what else you need to know. Get together as a group and begin to function, but get rid of the cancer. Have some balls. Denise Nystrom, as a board, two weeks ago, you had a meltdown, and you had a tell-all, and it wasn't about one incident, and you know it. It was about numerous incidents. Seven months ago, I didn't know any of you. I didn't know District Three. Unfortunately, I came to understand her egregious behavior. Why do you keep talking like it's one incident to us? And District Seven, not taking actions deepens the lack of faith in community and creates a further lack of not having credibility. Earlier, I thought you had a moment of sincerity. Was I wrong? I hope you still get your soundbites from Andrea Messina for the 2022 campaign election.
Ms....
Excuse me, that's a fact, it's a document. It's an email. Reset the clock. I'll take two minutes, please.
Ms. Nystrom, continue.
I'm going to take extra time. This is a dereliction of duty for you to do nothing about it. You have been involved with this malfeasance for years. It's just like the getaway driver, and the murderer gets in the car, and off you go. You are as culpable. You say you, you say that you want us to trust you, that you want to be honest. You need to prove that, you need to prove it tonight. If you can't be honest, you might as well stop that touchy-feely conflict resolution BS that you were doing earlier today, because you will never trust each other, because you have not gotten to the heart of the matter. You're lying, you're sweeping it under the carpet, you're protecting, you're doing the same things that you always did, while the community is begging for you to be honest. Let her face what she needs to face. If she has nothing to hide, say, "Investigate me." I don't have anything to hide, investigate me. People that are innocent don't mind really being investigated in that way. And I have to tell you, District Six, I am really disappointed in you. Okay, you were the one that fought for justice, fought for it for months and months. I watched those videos. I was depending on your credibility. If you don't do anything, shame, 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 and shame for trying to solve something after you've been abused.
Robert Roper, Ward Cleaver. District Five asked a little while ago, what can we do? Now, I like District Three personally, and I pray for her, but this is what you can do. You can enforce Board Policy 1.27, which says clearly, "The School Board of Lee County, Florida, does not discriminate nor tolerate discrimination on the basis of race, including anti-Semitism, color, ethnicity, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identification, gender expression, disability, physical or mental, pregnancy, marital status," I could go on. But it clearly says, "The School Board of Lee County, Florida, does not discriminate nor tolerate." If the District Three person cannot come to the reality that her continued service on the board is only counterproductive, it's not only counterproductive, it is a violation of board policy, and if District Three cannot do what needs to be done herself, the task becomes the duty of the board. There's been a violation of board policy. I read where a school bus driver was dismissed earlier this week for violating board policy. Enforce your own policy, because I have a feeling the citizens of this county are not going to go away until you do. District Three criticized a person that supplied goods and services, I'm trying to do this without saying a name, which cost the county a very good contract, and it's going to cost them in legal fees. And the reason she objected to that was hateful language. Ultimately, it's going to cost the district. Further, the use of legal precedents not to censure someone when the legal precedent has not been finished yet, it's still not passed the Supreme Court, is how we got into the LGBTQ trick that we got into, because we were citing possible outcomes in case law, and we made policies based on things that weren't enacted yet, they weren't case law yet, and we're doing the same thing now. Someone tonight said we need to do what's going to restore the confidence and the credibility of the public. The way to do that is to follow and enforce your own policy.
Good evening. This is the first time I've come to one of these meetings. I've watched you all on YouTube videos, I've followed some of the audience participants that are here. But I think to help you understand what we're seeing, or what I'm seeing, is you all are out here on a playground. You've got one member who's supposed to be leading the playground, and that person is bullying, harassing, using poor judgment, and you wouldn't accept that from children. And here you are, adults, here you are, professionals. I'm a professional nurse locally for 33 years. I worked very hard, I've never seen this in the meetings I've been to, in the boardrooms I've been to. I see a couple of people on the board that I think are really earnest in what they're trying to accomplish. I think the rest of you are just pushing back. You want it to go back to status quo, but that's your problem. And I really think it's beyond you.
Nystrom.
I think you need to take it to the state. I think this needs to be, you need to be held accountable, and you don't want to go, you don't want to, this is embarrassing, but you've created your own embarrassment. I think many of us have been to these kind of workshops where you try to get along, but this is systemic, this is really dysfunctional, and I hope the best for each one of you wherever you go in life, but this obviously isn't it. And the leader is probably the biggest bully of them all. And that's selfish to want to hold on to a position that you cannot maintain, that you don't have the judgment to maintain it.
Ma'am, could you please state your name?
Good evening, my name is Dana Burton. I wanted to address one of the board members who just made a comment stating that kids are not held responsible for comments they made at school. My daughter, a few years ago, was kicked out of middle school, straight A student, had never been in trouble at all, because she asked the principal to repeat something she said to her. They accused my daughter of insubordination, expelled her from middle school. I brought it here to the district, and I think it was an advisory committee we sat in front of, and every single one of them backed her up, that principal at the time, and said that my daughter was, had every right to be expelled from school. So, children do get held accountable for what they said, so do teachers, and bus drivers, as we just heard, got in trouble for it. So, it makes no difference, so this is a board member who has done something like this. Again, you need to be held accountable for things you do and say.
Good evening. District Three board member may claim to be sorry, but I assure you, she is not sorry. She spoke with such confidence as if the hatred and racist comments she made were true about Guatemalan children, and she proved that again tonight. It was, I was cringing, listening to her speech, about everything she said was true. She basically is saying that brown children are uncivilized, they just walked out of the jungle, and went straight to school, and for the first time, they saw water. My grandson is Guatemalan, and it's an insult. He has more culture than you will ever have in your whole life, and that is insulting to me. He is an A honor roll student, and he is a good student. And for you to make those comments, and not to denounce them, and to continue to skew this hatred for children, and you say you're for the children, and all of you that defended her, and said she made a stupid comment like a child, no, she made racist, hateful comments, and at her age, she should know better than that. And I was the speaker at EDAC, and let me tell you, we spoke extensively about an investigation into a sterile, and how that happened last May, because for two years, this board spent millions and millions of dollars on blocked land, and in the dark of the night, with a secret meeting with her friends, that whole property got switched to Three Oaks, and the sterile council got 40 to 50 acres of a free park that we're going to be eating, while children, while children in Lehigh...
Ms. Perez, you're off the motion. Ms. Perez, you're off of the motion at this point. The comments are not germane to the motion.
It is the motion, you're talking about abuse of power. That is the motion, and that's what we spoke about at EDAC. I was there, I was there. Play the video. You guys should learn to watch what is going on in this district. Graham, and Juan, and Dr. Meducian, and the chair, spoke about an investigation into a sterile, and the disparate treatment, which are civil rights violations. When you give more money to one environment because it's 93.3% white, and you have over 87% of children in Lehigh that are minorities, that are not getting the same care and attention and money being funded to them, you have a civil rights violation, and that needs to be investigated. That is abuse of power.
Tara Jenner. I grew up overseas, and I lived in a small town in southern Spain, and my best friends were gypsies, and they lived in an entire town that did not have running water. They did their laundry at the local fountain, and I can tell you, they all wore the sparkliest, whitest clothes you've ever seen, because it was a sense of pride for them, that despite the fact that they did not have running water in their town, they were still able to maintain not just high levels of hygiene, but exceptionally high levels of hygiene. It offends me greatly, every single time I hear any group that is lumped in as one big group of individuals, and we're using terms like "always," "everyone," these imperatives that include every single individual in that classification. It is dangerous to do so, and as someone who has been trained in the use of language, the board member who's being looked at tonight for her actions and behaviors should be intimately familiar with the fact that words matter. Earlier tonight, and I can't remember which board member it was, and you'd harass me if I said it anyway, said that children make mistakes. The people on the dais aren't children, they're grown adults, and they're speaking in a position of authority. And whenever you dismiss, downgrade, or in any way humiliate a group of children, or even an individual child, based on their actions in an open forum, that should never be tolerated. It really should never be tolerated, especially when this, in my opinion, is nothing but a straw that broke the camel's back. Traditionally, people don't get up in anybody's face until it impacts them directly, and I see this is now happening. A lot of people find this and take this personally, but here's the deal, this has been going on for a long time. And if this board member doesn't want to resign, at a bare minimum, she should be willing to allow and encourage an investigation of this potential abuse, because you know how much money we've spent tonight on overtime, on sheriffs, on air conditioning, you name it, not to mention, I think it was five hours the other night, as Don Armstrong pointed out, on this very subject matter, that could have been going towards the very education of our children, paying it for good quality teachers. This is a waste, fraud, waste, and abuse. Shame that you do not say, "Investigate me, I have nothing to hide," unless you have something to hide.
My name is Keith Olson. I have observed tonight, from District Three, a quote-unquote apology, and yet, it reminds me of the kinds of apologies of a lot of abusers that I've done therapy with. And it's the kind of apology that turned away responsibility to EDAC, to other board members, to all kinds of things, and focus, try to refocus blame, responsibility on other people. And I'm concerned, because I mentioned earlier tonight about the unhealthy system. So many of you have come to try to keep things the same, in the same way that abusive families try not to have the whole system changed, because it's more comfortable. And those of you who are trying to keep things the same, one of you said, "In order to inspire confidence in the board, passivity, keeping things the same, does the exact opposite. Acting with strength to change the system is what inspires my confidence." Some of you talked about children's bad behavior, and how should we respond to them? We certainly should be accepting, and loving, and sit down, and have a conversation with them. I agree, the first time, the second time, the third time. However, continuing to do that has a way of instilling repetitive behavior because there's no consequences. You're all teachers, you're educators, you know this. You know that at some point, you've got to change your response to the... You know that at some point, you've got to change your response to the bad child and change their, in order to change their behavior. If the child refuses to change their behavior, then sometimes a suspension is required, then sometimes an expulsion is required. If we don't do that with children, they often get more and more depressed, lapse into conduct disorder, oppositional defiant disorder, and that can lead into narcissism and other kinds of patterns of adult behavior. And there have been, in this situation, systemic, long-term problems that you have talked about, that we have talked about observing, and it doesn't change by sitting down and having a conversation and trying to make a good impression. It changes only by making a dramatic move, which I think should be forced resignation.
Dr. Grass, wow, you sensing some anger in the room? You think that is a show of support for the actions of the board? You sit on the board of a Fortune 500 company, a $2 billion company with an educational product to educate 95,000 students. Get your act together. This is not time for touchy-feely kumbaya moments. You have an issue. This resolution, this motion that Ms. Gittens has put forward, it's weak. Take that off the table. Six of you need to sanction this board member and ask for her resignation. Let the lawsuits fall where they may, but this is what must be done to bring unity back to this board. You've wasted hours and hours on this issue that you could have put into the school district and into bettering the educational system for our students. Let's get back to work, board members. Do your jobs, take care of this problem, and move on. Thank you.
My name's Heather. I just wanted to say that I agree with the motion that District 5 board member put forth tonight, and I wanted to thank her and District 2 board member for being brave and attempting to bring accountability to the district. I would highly encourage the rest of the board to vote yes on this motion. During discussion, one board member asked how credible do they think this makes the board look? Guess what? It actually makes you look more credible when the public can see that proper actions are being taken to hold everyone accountable. Bullying and harassment is a level 2 violation for students, which eventually ends up in recommendation for placement in the success academy and/or expulsion. Faculty would be terminated if they violated board policy or acted in the same manner as District 3 board member has over the years. There has got to be consequences for her actions. The public needs to be shown that the board members who are elected officials are held to a hired standard than students and staff, and yet here we are letting certain board members issue a small apology and get just a talking to when something like this happens. I implore you to please do the right thing tonight. Show the public you're dedicated to improving transparency, our confidence and trust in you.
Hello, Christine Divagili again. I don't have much to say because everyone literally said everything for me, but if we don't get up here and engage in these conversations, then you'll then have the opportunity to say, oh, well, it was just a couple of people, and not everybody feels that way. So this is going to sound a little redundant, and I'm sorry for that, but you know, if this was one of my children, if these were two of my children, if one of my children assaulted verbally or otherwise another child, there would be recourse for that action above and beyond. Now, the first incident, sure, my child would have to apologize, which this particular board member did a very poor job of. If that was an apology, if my child gave me an apology like that, I would be demanding another, after they took some time to think about what it is that they really want to say, especially to our children, because they are the most important stakeholder in this conversation, and they were an afterthought to you, and that is devastating. Going back to my kids, if this was the third, or fourth, or fifth, or sixth year of dealing with this type of behavior from them, more serious action would need to take place. You are not a family, so I don't expect you to deal with this person's actions in the way that I would my own children. I expect better, I expect more, I expect accountability. I completely disagree with board member number seven over there and her comments about, I believe that by taking action, you give yourself credibility for once, for once. You do the right thing. It is not that hard. Actually, it is hard. It is very hard to do the right thing. I shouldn't say that. It's extremely difficult to do the right thing. And there are people throughout history where there was only one person doing the right thing, and thank God for that one person, because without that one person, we wouldn't have the United States that you see here today. I wish we could have some of that courage, some of that behavior from our board members, from our, from the people that are supposed to represent us. I would love it if my board member would be brave and would not just follow the status quo, seeing as my board member has been sitting on the dais the longest and has seen this behavior the longest. I would love to see that from my board member personally. I would love to see that from our at-large board members, because they are my board members as well. Represent all of us, please, not your own special interests.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? And I would just like to say too, I don't believe that we are wasting time. We have a process that we're going through, so we must make sure that we hear from everyone up here, and we must make sure that we give you all time to speak as well. So unfortunately, or fortunate, it does take time, so I just, I had to say that. So seeing no other people, public comments, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote, and this will be a hand vote. So Ms. Butch...
Could you repeat one more time?
Okay. Could you please repeat the, the actual... Because my, my motion, you said was incorrect, so...
It was a motion to ask the governor to look into a systemic, consistent abuse of position and accountability for actions of a board member.
Ms. Morgan?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Chivinelli?
Yes.
And Ms. Fisher?
No.
And I believe that...
Your vote.
Yes, I know. I just think if, we, it has nothing to do with you all, so please, I just think that we know that...
Out of order, please.
As far as, I think this is definitely on you to make it right. And so, but I don't know how the governor does that, or who is the person who's supposed to do this.
Point of order, Madam Chair, with all due respect.
I'm sorry, okay.
I think we need to hear your vote.
I know, I'm thinking.
Well, we need, it's been a lot of time to think.
Thank you. I am going to... Yes, I guess, yes.
The motion carries.
May I please ask the, another question at the board? Come to a consensus to let Attorney Bruno at least draft something to follow through, or that we can work with her to do that?
That's fine. Mr. Pre, Bruno, would you?
Since it was my motion, I would work with her.
So if it's a motion, then we need to have public comment again.
No, 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 no.
I don't think it's a motion.
No, it's not a motion.
You just said, I'm making a motion.
No, I am asking, I am not going to make a statement for our employee to do something. I am asking the board, is it all right, to ask her to work with me to do that and then get it back to the board?
So this is, this is a request for a directive from the board to instruct me to draft a letter. Any direction from the board?
So Ms. Gittens is asking if, for you to, to get consensus for you to draft up something to send to the governor's. So do I, consensus on this, please? That Ms. DePree Bruno does this?
I don't know how else you would do it.
But she would be...
It's her job.
It's her job, right. It passes, so would you please draft something up? Well, it is, Ms. DePree, as the attorney, she would draft up something to send to the governor. Are there any other board comments?
I never did mine.
And I didn't either.
Oh, you got to finish then, sorry. I know.
All board comments, this whole entire...
No, with it, with her, she was her.
This is, so, again, I apologize, so the meeting will continue, so you can enjoy some more time there.
Am I going for a series? Okay, I'm making it very quick. First of all, to Pastor Roper, I apologize that you've not received any information. I will definitely follow up and get back to you within the next 24 hours. I guarantee that, whether we have an answer or not. I don't know if it's something that's a public records request or how we would do that, but I will ask the attorney about how to get that information. Today, we had a presentation about capital projects, and I just have to say that the Quadruple A project has now gone to 93 million, and that the cost of building schools and our inflation is up 14%, which really, really concerns me, because if the next schools that we try to build in other areas that have need, I'm being generic, are we going to be able to do it? Because we're running out of funds that we were, we end up being back where we were before we got the House sent tax that was supposed to help us build schools because we didn't have the money. And today, we were talking about that, and somebody mentioned how many portables. Well, in February of '21, we received a report, there were 178 portables, and 19% were in the South Zone, that was 35.5%, or 10% were in the West, and 70% or 126% were in the East Zone. That was in February. We have not built anything to give us any additional seats. So I know we're working on it, and no offense on the projects that are coming, but it's kind of like, you know, saying Christmas is coming and it never comes. We can't keep saying in two years, and two years, and two years, and spending $93 million on a building that, when I looked at the utilization of the three schools that Ms. Patrico mentioned in her report, Three Oaks had Middle, had 101% utilization, Three Oaks Elementary, 112, Pine Woods had 103. Unless it's new math, there's no way to get 117 out of any of those numbers. So, and I continue to bring it up because it just is an issue of the taxpayers' money, of the resources and equity in this community. We're just moving ahead with things, and I have to be the voice of reason to speak for the students and the, and the teachers and everyone in that zone that don't have the same things that everybody else has. In 2021, they don't have the same things, so I just wanted to bring that up. I want to finish on a good note. The principal's letter, I want to say to the principals, I know many of you are watching as you have wine and popcorn, because it takes that to get through our meetings sometimes. The principal's letter, thank you for the courage of speaking up, thank you for making that statement. After a couple of issues that had happened that went to the news, I did bring it up, that we need to look at how we vet information, and if you read the principal's letter, that's what, that's what they were talking about as well. We cannot put ourselves in a position of defaming someone and not have all of the details. And one of the things that I had suggested is that when situations happen in a school, that rather than having a district person to speak, have the principal or administrator from that school to speak about it. It's a familiar face for the parents, it's a familiar face for the community, and it calms them down. But I was told that they're afraid to speak. I don't think so. I think out of the whole group, you can find someone that would be willing to represent your school and speak. So thank you. I look forward to the superintendent letting us know when we can relax the masks mandate for our teachers. And it's interesting, because I was in several schools last week, and the number of kids and people wearing masks was a ton. Most of them are wearing them, and it's an option. So let's just give them an option, is all I'm saying. Thank you so much. Thank you to staff, thank you community, and everybody that supports our students in the Lee County School District, and thank you. Good night.
Ms. Vaughn, did you have anything else to say? Because I know it was your turn when we started this whole... I just...
I actually, I just wanted to clarify that what I, what I said earlier when you asked about EDAC, and I do believe that I did absolutely represent what EDAC asked me to represent. There was some discussion on other issues, but the final request and recommendations from EDAC were what I said the first time. So I just, since one of the speakers said, implied otherwise, I just want to go back and say again, yes, those things were mentioned, but that was not, in the two hours and 15 minutes that we had that meeting, that was not the requests and recommendations from EDAC.
Thank you for clarifying, I appreciate that. Ms. Morgan, did you?
I have no comments.
Thank you. Ms. Chivinelli?
Okay, I'll be quick. So I would like to thank, and actually, I would like to praise the superintendent, staff, bus drivers, students, and parents as we complete the first quarter of the school year. All, we must all, we were all committed in to this, as, I can't even talk, I'm sorry, and the stuff I wrote earlier today. We are all, all must be commended as we hit the pandemic wall yet again at the beginning of the school year. I'd like to really thank the superintendent leading us through this most difficult time. I value everyone throughout the district working hard for all our students. I also want to take, to thank everyone that came out tonight and spoke and taken an interest in our schools in Lee County. It doesn't matter to me where you live, or if you have children or students in the schools, as I don't care, because I'm glad that you want to be involved. I think that's important, and I just want to commend people for coming out and doing that, because so many feel like their voice isn't heard, and believe me, we hear you. As we educate our students, they will be going out into this world, and I want to welcome the community that cares about our students. So I am grateful, and I believe in public awareness, so thank you. In fact, I encourage every community to be involved, everyone in the community to be involved. I will admit, it's been difficult coming to meetings the past five years. The board... The board had, had a team building assignment today, and this was stuff I wrote, and that started just today, and, and I do feel that it's much needed. I still feel that it's needed, and, and we must continue this journey to be a better board. And the more I thought about it, I think there is a way to move us in the right direction and mend fences. If this board is truly wanting to move us forward, they will consider this as an opportunity to be a team and elect me as the next school board member, chair. And I am the only board member that's never been a board chairman. I feel with the unanimous vote, it will send a clear message that we are finally a team. I am committed to this board, and I should be allowed to show that we are all committed by, by electing me as the next board chair. Can we be a team? I'm willing and prepared to bring us together. Let's see if we can be a team by electing me. Thank you. And one more thing, one last thing, unmask our staff. Make it optional. Dr. Savage, thank you.
Ms. Fisher, did you have anything else?
No, I gave my comments, thank you.
And Ms. Patrica? The only comment that I, what is...
If I, if I may, you know, I was, I was put on the spot tonight to talk about what I'm doing for students, and if I make that public, then I'm in the wrong for making big deal out of it, and putting it out in public, and then I get bad headlines for trying to make amends and trying to make a big deal out of it. I don't appreciate being put in that position, and the work that I'm doing behind the scenes is meant to be good work, not to be work that gets the attention of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. And I just want to say too, we all sit up here, and we need to make sure that we're not, we're sitting up here on this pedestal or whatever. We have to look at ourselves and make sure that we are doing what we're supposed to do. We all make mistakes, and we do need to make sure that we keep ourselves in check as well as we move forward. And, and I think that it is going to be hard to bring this, bring everybody together, but I think that we have to continue to do that, because we have a job to do, and we need to work together to get it done. And it's going to take each and every one of us to do this. So that's what I'm asking of all of you to just, let's not constantly call out one person, you know, before we start doing that, let's think about our words as well. So please, let's, let's just think about that. Mr. Pre Bruno?
I don't have any comment.
Thank you. Dr. Savage?
I just have a few. Just want to first thank Ms. Fisher for bringing up October, and specifically, the entire month is dedicated to National Bullying Prevention Month. Just to really reiterate for our children out there, our students are a top priority, and we've talked about the mental health issues we've been dealing with. The bullying is just such an important thing, because even as adults, you know, we really develop the capacity to, to withstand and try to diminish some of the impacts. But for students, as they're going through a lot of their more formative years, it can have a really pronounced impact. So just as a message to our children who are out there, whether you are bullying, whether you are a bully, whether you've witnessed bullying, it is so important to acknowledge the, the harm that it can do, and to be not just one board, or one governance team, but one district, one, one community, all of us standing up for each other and helping to lift each other up. That's what we can do, that's what we want our kids to do, and it's what we want all of us to do. So I just wanted to kind of reiterate, and thank you for bringing up that piece, because I don't think I'd have another opportunity to bring it up in October, so...
Thank you for those comments.
My pleasure. Also, just wanted to answer, one of the questions that we received was just about the objectionable materials, banned books, and so forth. So just want to reiterate, so Ms. Vaughn, you'd mentioned about that there isn't a form. That form is very accessible to our public, so that's through the Parent Bill of Rights webpage, as well as the Curriculum and Instruction Department webpage. Both of those have that form to make it very easy for folks to identify that piece. And what happens is a committee actually reviews those materials and can look through any particular material that is done, so you want to make sure that was known as well. Also, the topic of masks, I just want to reiterate, for those who didn't catch our comments yesterday, today, I'm sorry, tomorrow, the district's medical educational panel is again convening, and certainly the, the top issue that I really wanted to get resolution on is the mask. Even though they are looking at all the mitigation factors, they did also look at the, they did select the community transmission rate, that's the critical metric they would be using for all of our mitigation measures. Just, we know how critical the mask issue is, and so they are reviewing that tomorrow. We certainly will have a decision on, on how the mask policy will be enforced and whatnot prior to close of business on Friday, if not sooner, just in, and a chance to have that panel evaluated, and then all the issues that go along with that. So thank you. Those are the comments for this evening.
Thank you. I just want to thank staff as well for staying here with us all evening, and all the deputies out there. Really appreciate you all. The next scheduled meeting of the board, on Monday, November the 1st, there will be a board workshop at 1:00 p.m. On Tuesday, November 2nd, there will be a board briefing at 1:00 p.m., followed by an action meeting at 6:00 p.m. At this point, having no further business to come before this board, seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned.